Okay, call the meeting of the Acton Zoning Board of Appeals to order October 25th, 2021. The first item on the agenda is the resignation of one of our members.
The Board of Selectmen accepted the resignation of Rollin Waterhouse at last week's meeting.
Okay. The next item is designate alternates.
So currently, Yola Gallagher is an alternate with her blessing. We will ask the Board of Selectmen to make her a regular member at this Wednesday's meeting. She certainly would be entitled to vote tonight as a regular or an alternate, but we're hoping for her blessing and then we'll advertise the opening spots from there.
Okay, and I believe that the resignation took away our secretary.
Yes, did we have her blessing? To make her a regular?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy says yes. Yeah, so Mr. Waterhouse was the secretary as well.
No.
Okay. So if I can say my same piece that I said as we talked, we're all in for it. The town supplies me as your town administrator as doing all the secretarial work. Essentially, the job of the secretary is per the zoning. I mean, you're going to be doing the proofing, but we're going to do all the legwork for you. It's a matter of me emailing you the documents first, reviewing them, and just going over those types of things. You're not going to have to take notes, you're not going to have to type minutes. We will do all that for you.
Okay.
Don't let the job scare you. I'm sorry?
So you're going to be the secretary, basically?
Well, I am the secretary as a paid position, but somebody on this committee needs to be the secretary. I'm just trying to convince them to take it as it's not going to be too much work on their part, as we'll do a majority of it.
Okay.
Brandy?
I'd like to nominate Brandy.
I second. I've been...
Sure.
Great.
Sure.
The nominations, all closed, all in favor. I...
I look forward to working with you, Brandy.
Thank you, thank you. It should be interesting. I don't even know how to spell secretary, but it'll be all right.
That's all right. Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes of the August 2nd meeting.
So on August 8th, we emailed you the 16 pages worth of minutes.
Mrs. Chair, I make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes.
Thank you.
I second that.
All right.
Have we already approved them via email?
No, you approved the finding of facts because you approved the finding of facts in the end of the last meeting, but you actually can't accept them. You still need a motion at the next meeting.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes, to approve the minutes of the August 2nd meeting.
One of them have to do it.
I will approve the minutes from August whatever, 2nd.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, tonight we have a public hearing. I assume it's map 252, lot 006, variance request, James Logan, agent.
All right, so I have some things that we'll pass out to you and then you can decide if you want to turn it over. Mr. Logan is here. He's represented as the agent in the paperwork that you got. He did prove to the town that he had the authority to speak on behalf of the property owner. So that's the packet that you received via mail. CEO also has a portion for you out of Board of Appeals and the zoning that he wants to reference in regards to one particular setback that cannot be granted in the variance, a waterfront setback. Mr. Logan is not asking for that, but we want to make sure that your motion doesn't contradict what the zoning allows, so we'd like you to have one of those. And in addition, we have a map for you of the actual property and the current measurements of it.
What is the difference between the new packet and the old?
None. I just, God love you, can't count on you bringing it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I like this map better.
Oops, I'm sorry, huh? Makes you run.
Yeah. Yeah, I like this better. All right, so in the packet that you have, Nancy, you'll see the denial letter from the code officer because he's not able to meet all the setbacks as required, and Mr. Logan is here to ask for a variance, I believe, on just one of those setbacks.
Correct.
Okay, so 35th Street is on Mousom, right? The...
Lower back side.
Pardon?
It's on the back side of Mousom.
Actually, if I may, I could give some background to the board because that was what brought the Lawrences to me in the first place. The town map shows the property on Heath Brook, and your ordinance describes Brook setbacks for structures of 75 feet. Lake setbacks, as in Mousom Lake, are 100 foot. So we were at a dilemma point with this particular property, trying to determine where we Brook frontage or where we lake frontage.
Is he right?
I don't know your names.
I'm sorry, I'm James Logan.
James Logan, thank you.
I'm a licensed site evaluator. I design leach beds for a living. I'm also a licensed soil scientist by trade, and I also am a wetland scientist and delineate wetlands for a living. So I do an awful lot of DEP permitting and work with town ordinances regularly. I have an office in Kennybunk.
Thank you.
So when the Lawrences came to me and approached me, they had background information from quite a ways back that included input from DEP as to whether this was Brookfront or lakefront. This question had come up before. In an effort to come to the bottom of it in a way that I could represent it in factual way to you, we went to the Little River Survey Company, Tyler Cuts, and I had Tyler relate this waterfront property to the dam elevation on Mousom Lake.
Okay.
Because I thought that was more germane. In other words, the elevation that's controlled by the dam on the pond was only about two tenths of a foot difference from what this waterfront lot is. So I felt that it was correct to represent to you folks that it's pondfront, it's lakefront, it's not Heath Brook. Because it is a dam-controlled structure, that Brook at that point along the shorefront is the same elevation as the lake. So we're coming to you as needing to meet that lakefront setback measurement, which is 100 feet in your ordinance, and it's not waiverable or variances are not permissible. We shifted gears and came back with a plan that shows 100-foot full compliance to the lake setback. But now what we're asking for is relief from the road frontage setback. And your ordinance describes a 50-foot requirement from the center line of the right-of-way, and we have shown around 27 feet, or something a little better than 50% of the required setback.
Okay.
That's what we're here asking for tonight.
And you showed, again, I'm sorry.
So it's...
How many feet did you show?
We showed 27 when 50 is required. Another germane point to be made is that I believe this is the terminal end of 35th Street, and there, to my knowledge, is only one lot beyond this. So that should you feel relief is in order, and we can manage this reduction in setback, there are not going to be a lot of cars going past that frontage and that last camp on that section of road before you get to the terminal end.
Right, so it is from the road setback.
From the center line of the road, yes.
Thank you.
We meet the side setbacks. They came to me with a septic plan from 1996. The lot was already soil-tested by another designer, Ken Gardner of Limington. I'm familiar with his work. I didn't want to bill these people for an update of a septic design until we had a chance to get some input from you folks. In the event we get the relief that these folks need, I would be able to design a two-bedroom minimum septic system in compliance, full compliance with the main state plumbing code. And we intended to also provide on this plan a place so that code enforcement and you folks could see a well could be placed there also in full compliance with the main plumbing code. So really, it is just the structure we're talking about. Because it is a grandfathered lot of record that's not built, in other words, there's no grandfathered structure there, we have asked for a fairly modest-sized structure, just 16 by 20, which would be able to then provide some kind of a reasonable return for these folks on that property. Should there be any other questions from the board, I'm perfectly willing to answer them. Let's see what else I have here in my notes. The lots, the original survey plan, I think, goes back to the 60s. So clearly, the lots, there were four of them altogether on the original plan. The ordinance, I believe, requires that any unbuilt, non-conforming lots get cleaved together as one, which is why your town tax map refers to just one map and lot, although originally, back in the day when they were surveyed, there were four of them there.
Which one you talking about? The Lot 6?
Yeah.
Correct.
So that used to be four lots?
Four smaller individual lots, correct. And at the time that those lots were created in the 60s, your town didn't have a minimum lot size, and I believe the required lake setback, we dug around, I thought it was 50 feet. It was something less than 75 even, I believe.
Yeah.
In that shoreline zone. So again, the requirement for us tonight is to demonstrate to you that these folks have done nothing to that property to make it unbuiltable, other than the zoning ordinance changed to make it unbuiltable. And that's what we're asking for relief from.
Now, do the Lawrences own any other lots around there? Because I thought...
They do not.
No.
Oh, okay. Because I thought they had, there's two Lot 6s here.
Yeah, so and just for clarity, the property is in the name of Glant. It's someone who's deceased.
Okay.
Mrs. Lawrence, as I understand it, is the personal rep...
Linda Lawrence is the personal representative of the estate of Glant.
Okay. But we have checked that, that's the only property.
Oh, okay.
And who wants to build on it?
We don't know who wants to build on it yet. We're seeking the ability to put something there.
I understand, thank you, okay.
Is that even a town road that...
35th?
Does it go all the way past?
No, it doesn't.
I feel like it stops.
It's a paper street. It's not constructed past the lot.
Oh, okay.
So it's currently a paper street, but it is the access for this property via the tail end or the terminus of 35th Street. That's all been surveyed.
Because right now, you can't go past...
Right, you have to walk into the lot from where you park at the head of the...
Because I've been out there a ton, and I'm like...
Right.
Okay.
That's where the benefit of the survey plan come in, because the driveway peels off the 35th Street access.
Well, it kind of circles around, right? It's kind of like a circle around?
I don't think it circles all the way around. It kind of dead-ends out into that last lot.
Okay, and...
It kind of does?
No, 34th Street circles.
34th Street is the circle, that's a loop. 35th is a dead end.
No, 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 I don't mean by circle around, I mean it just has a loop through so that you can...
At the very end.
Turn around.
At the very end. And I think that might be off of the right-of-way and into the abutting property on the opposite side.
Oh, okay.
That's what the clarification of this plan will help with, should we get the relief.
And there's no way of getting any land from, is it Browning? Browning's not willing to give up, not give up, but...
Well...
The only setback they need is from the road.
Right.
Exactly. But right now, there's no road there.
Right, but the ownership of the road would be a real miserable thing, a really difficult thing to try to adjust. You know, that would have a lot of different owners that would have deeded rights to that. That's the reason why we're here, asking for the relief from that center line.
Nancy?
So there's never been any other owners besides the original owners, the Glant, is that correct?
They bought it from the Swans, right, in the late 60s.
In the late 60s.
So they were even in existence then. Hence, they were very small.
Lois? I was going to say, can I ask the CEO a question?
Sure.
I have just a, I think it's a quick question. A private road, I know back a few years ago when they were working with private roads, it was a different extinguish how the length of the roads go. In other words, 25 feet, 50 feet, 60 feet, and whatever you're going to do. Because you had to have, they had A, B, and C and D roads. Where does this classify on that road? And that will make a big...
I don't know which road it classifies, but they just need to meet the minimum road, which is Class C, which is, I think it's like a 30-foot wide dirt road. I'm not, I guess I can look it up, but the, that road does just, that does meet its, up until that property, it does meet what the town requires for a road. Width of it, I don't know.
Well, there's no road there.
Well, there's a half a road.
Right.
Partial road.
You still have a road that leads to the property.
Goes halfway up.
Right, goes halfway up. You see where the little block is?
Yeah, I know, I see that. I've driven in there a few times, and I'm just having a hard time.
And that's the argument, is that they're going to stay so far away from that also, and if there's a lot beyond that, that person also has to have access to get to his or hers lot at that time.
That's the reason why I thought it would be a complication to try to get more land in that right-of-way area or across the right-of-way even. It doesn't help us particularly unless we're able to relocate the right-of-way to get more depth into the lot.
So what I'm trying to say is if you go and get more land, then you're putting a right-of-way through the property. You know what I mean? So it makes it more complicated instead of having property on one side of the right-of-way.
So the right-of-way is already deeded, it's already mapped out, it's...
It's already there.
The other complicating factor is if we were to gain more land, then I think maybe the legal status of our grandfathering may be in question.
So is this land beyond the lot? Is that shapely, or is that Acton?
No, there's one, I'm pretty sure there's one more house there, isn't there?
I don't know if there's a house, I think it's just a...
I mean, one more land.
It's a large lot.
There's another lot of land there.
It's a large lot, and they've been cutting trees, but there's no house there.
There's another lot of land there.
Yeah, it's a big lot.
I think they have a camper park.
I think a couple, I think there's a camper on there too, yeah.
How does it work with grandfathering when there's not a structure on there already?
It's still a buildable lot, so when the lot was formed, it was a lot of record, so it becomes a buildable lot. And if you transfer, if you research back, it's lineage or whatever you want to call it, but you will find out that was formed when the ordinance said that you could build on that lot, so it becomes grandfathered.
Okay.
And it's a lot of record.
So what are those, what are their measurements to be, what are they grandfathered to?
I'd have to go back in the ordinance of when it was...
When it was changed?
When it was changed, on what it was for waterfront as well as the thing, I think we were going with our current standards, so that you can't, so you can't, the town of Acton doesn't allow, if you look on this...
Non-conforming lots?
Yeah, so this is what was printed up from our ordinance earlier today, and it's for the Board of Appeals. If you flip to the second page, it'll explain to you that at no means are you allowed to grant any setbacks for waterfront. So what we're trying to do is establish if you guys are, decide, but to give them some leeway with the road.
Is it 23 feet they're looking for?
Yeah.
23 feet?
Ours for a non-conforming lot, it would be 50 feet from the center of the right-of-way. They're proposing to put the structure 26 feet from the center.
27.
27 feet from the...
27.
27.
But this is established as Heath Brook, is that correct?
No, this is established, the map says Heath Brook at lower Mousom Lake. We're established that it's the lake.
They're taking the Morse...
Which is the reason for the 100-foot setback.
Right, they're taking the Morse fringent role.
Right, and that's the reason for the lake setback versus the Brook and all that setback.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, thank you.
Do we know where the line is, where it defines where the Brook is and where the lake is?
Oh, I wouldn't want to have to be that one to decide. It's so flat in there. You'd be pretty far up the Brook, I think.
Yeah, they're coming in with, so the setback for Brook is 75 feet. So they're coming in and saying that the property actually is part of the lake front. So they could have went with what they had in record, saying it was part of the Brook, but he wanted to set the record straight that it's part of the lake.
Exactly.
So he could have came in and said, hey, I'm looking, I actually only need 75 feet from the waterfront, but he's coming in with the honest and saying that we're actually part of the lake.
So you're going to be, oh, I see, so that puts you like 30...
And it isn't the lakes that having an issue with, it's the road frontage on the front.
No, I understand that part, but I just didn't understand like...
Not to confuse things, but when we first came here, I thought we could ask for this water setback down to 75 because that's what the state allows. But Jason clarified to me that your ordinance was expressly created, your zoning in terms of what could be waived or what could be sought for relief. The setback to the lake was removed from that, and no variances to lakes in the town of Acton are allowed. And therefore, we're back and we're asking for the reduction to the center line of the road. And we don't need any other waivers or relief besides that.
Going back to the roads in their building, because this is a private road, and you said it's 30 feet and it has the rights to be a private road and with all the extras and all that stuff, going back to that, and you've got the, you know, how it's going to be turning in apparently, that lot behind that, if the road continues and goes to that lot behind that, it's going to make a problem with that, or is it just going to just go?
No, it's going to follow their...
Follow the concept.
It's going to follow their lot design, what it's designed, they can't, they're going to put the road on their lot.
Right, but I, you know, with the way, the way things are...
I would call attention to the building that is shown on the plan that's before the existing building, which already is a similar distance from that right-of-way and is also a non-conforming distance. But that's a building that probably is a grandfathered structure.
If you look at the maps online...
You see that? What I'm suggesting is that if you grant the relief to my clients, it's not going to be that different from other dwellings that are even larger in the neighborhood that are as close to the road as we're asking to be. But those are grandfathered structures, they've probably been here longer than your ordinance.
Lois, if you look at the maps online, the property that abuts this, the large piece of parcel that you're looking at, actually has access through Tattle Street. You can see that Tattle Street goes through that, so they...
So that makes a difference.
Right, so this other, the road that kind of ends in front of their property is never going to have anything with the next property because that big plot, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See, Tattle Street goes right through that, that's this road here.
So they'll never connect the two?
Right.
Right. So basically, this is the end, this is where she's at, or he's at, and that's theirs. Did you actually find out if the neighbors have issue with that? If you change it around, or is it just the town ordinance that's making it?
It's the town ordinance that has us here.
Yeah, we sent notices to all the abutters, so if they have concerns, they need to be here tonight.
Do we have a butter here?
I came because I got the notice. For the first house on 35th Street. So they do, they do the fourth house. And I have no problem. It's not an issue. You're glad to have something to clean the area.
There you go.
So I've, as for all the technicalities, I'm fine with it. And I don't see any of my neighbors being upset or some of them are wanting to...
And which neighbor are you?
First one, 35th.
Name?
Kenneth Libby.
Thank you.
Kenneth Libby?
Win.
Oh, Win, Win, so Lot 9.
I have no wish I'm trying to... I said it.
Do you have a proposed building envelope on your bigger map there?
We're not at liberty to show a building window because the structure we show is non-conforming.
Well, my question is more like how it would, to have a visual of what you're proposing in terms of the 27 feet back from the road and the...
It's a 16 by 20 structure, pretty small.
I guess what she's asking for is where your, where's the placement going to be?
It's on this map right here.
I would think the 20 feet is going to be lengthwise.
Is that this one?
Because the map, because the map we have doesn't...
No, 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 this, we went to great extent to show the structure.
Okay, so that's this little one.
Correct, and unfortunately, that's why I brought the bigger one. So you see, it's mentioned to have to be 16 by 20, proposed camp.
That's what I thought initially.
Thank you very much. No, it's nice to have the bigger layout.
Okay.
So do you see we've dimensioned it 16 by 20?
And is this the 100-foot line here?
This is the 100-foot line, see?
The red?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're just outside, quite frankly, we came right to the edge, and we might make this 29 feet. You see that? And I, the original septic was laid like this by the other guy. I've turned it and made it closer to the property line.
Okay, so there is room for the septic to be out and the well?
There is, right, but it showed where there is room for a well, 100 feet from that location.
Okay.
Okay, you don't know where the, oh, I see, there's the well.
This would be a proposed, a potential well.
I see.
And those all meet all of the...
Correct.
The, all those...
All the main state plumbing.
Okay.
So really, this is the only relief. And again, this driveway is already going off into this lot. That's existing, right?
Right.
So we're going to create this, and the minute we're here, we can come in with the lot.
Gotcha. Gotcha. So it's going to upset the neighbors that you're now moving that road closer?
Jason, other than our town's laws and setbacks, is there any other purpose that this should not be done?
Um...
I read your statement.
No, so my job is just to deny it as the fact that it was unbuiltable, that didn't meet its setbacks, I think that's...
And you feel it doesn't qualify for a grandfather clause?
Well, there's no structure on it now, and they can't meet the 100-foot setback, so you have to, so they have to go back towards the road, which doesn't allow me to give them a building permit. That's why they're here in front of you. It's not my decision to make, to say if it's...
And even if they went back...
As any reason, two or two, that's kind of where your job comes in.
And even if they went back as many years as is possible to do whatever, and...
Yeah, but we're going with what, so it's a buildable lot, but we're going to still use our setbacks that we used today.
Current setbacks.
Well, that's where I'm confused, because it's not grandfathered.
It's a grandfathered, buildable lot, but we have to use our current setbacks, because if it was grandfathered, there's, you can trace it back to where it was 35 feet of waterfront, you know, you only had to be 35 feet off the water. We're not going to do that today because everybody in the town would be mad at us.
Right.
It's what they're grandfathered.
There's a difference between the two. It can be grandfathered and make it buildable, but it still has to meet the current setback.
So to answer you on, my job was to find that they couldn't put a building on at the time. Now, it's, I guess, your guys' job to decide if you want to grant the variance and relieve, give them the relief. Other than that, I can't really, you know, if you have a zoning question, I can help you out with, but...
Well, the only reason I'm asking that is because I know several other entities in town that if they had to meet today's qualifications, even though they have a home on it, they wouldn't make it.
Right.
Right, oh, without a doubt.
That's why I'm, and they'd be grandfathered.
I'd say about 90% of your lakefront properties would meet our zoning.
Right.
They couldn't meet it. Right, and that's why...
Maybe I could clarify, you're talking about buildable versus a lot of record.
Correct.
These are, this is a lot of record. It was determined by Jason to not be buildable, we got denied. So without some relief from you folks, this lot is not buildable. There is no reasonable return.[1646.44] It's a hardship case. We're here because my clients did nothing to their land to change the outcome, to make it unbuildable, other than your ordinance changing before they could put a building there.
Is this gonna be a year-round home or a camp?
We're calling it a camp, I think, once you grant the relief, how it gets built...
Does it matter?
As long as it is the same footprint as what we've shown, it could be a very small year-round home. We're trending towards tiny homes anyway, right?
So if that line is one thirty-eight, you'd have thirty-eight feet and twenty-five, how much of that would, oh, you couldn't, okay.
What's that?
How many feet are you feeling?
I was thinking with the width of the lot, if it would be possible, I mean, if you put a real skinny building, you still...
No, 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 you're missing the point. The, the road setback from the center line is fifty, that'd take us to the hundred-foot setback line to the lake, there's no, there's no window, no skinny house fit.
There's like forty feet.
It doesn't comply, there's no window to work in. So we're asking for a relief that gives us a little thing...
I was just...
In that, outside the hundred feet, because that's not something you have the right or...
Right.
The, I guess the authority to waive, but you can waive that, that center line from the road.
Correct.
And we thought that was the most benign of them, because there is nothing on the other side of the right-of-way, and they have access off of a different town road as well.
So on the other side of the right-of-way, it's just a blank lot, or is there nothing there, period?
It's vacant.
Vacant?
They have a couple of campers back off into the woods.
No, not the above, right across.
A right across is vacant.
Okay.
It's all woods, right? It's not even cleared out yet?
Right, they got some trees.
Well, I just don't wanna conflict that neighbor either, you know, if there is...
Oh, Lot Five?
Yeah, they, you know, they could change their heart and mind anytime, if they have enough space.
Is Lot Five here?
If you look at this plan, and you, you can project where someone that is gonna have the ability to build this camp is gonna have to build a driveway into their lot, it's only gonna be further away from the abut you're concerned about. Right? If you look at the way, here, I'll show you this on the map again, if you're concerned about...
Well, what I was concerned about is...
If you're concerned about this abut.
Yeah.
Well, look at where the driveway is already, if these guys build the driveway here, it's only gonna be further away from anything.
But you have, we have to have a twenty-five-foot easement away from the driveway, don't we?
No.
I thought we had to.
Oh, no, there's no easement for a driveway.
There's no...
I thought you had to be twenty-five feet away from your property line.
Not, um...
For a driveway?
For a driveway.
Well, I didn't think there was a setback.
Never heard that, no.
No.
Driveway's not a structure.
No, I know it's not a structure, but also you can't interfere with the structures, I don't think, going through. Yeah, I know.
All you're considering is the fifty feet from the center of the lot, from the center of the driveway, if you wanna allow him to be closer or not.
And we're asking for whatever fifty minus twenty-seven is.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three feet of length.
Twenty-three.
Pays me the tax voucher.
Randy, do you have any more questions?
Uh, no, I'm good. They've touched on mine. Yep. My questions have been addressed.
Okay. How about you, Lois?
I, I pretty much have got my answers, and I know, I know quite a bit what I'm thinking, so...
I do have to say I was confused when I first read it, I thought we were dealing with property in Kennybunk, I'm like, what? Why does it say, so these people have a private road in Kennybunk, and now they're going to have a private road in Acton, is that how that's working?
Sorry for the confusion.
Is that, is that how, physical address was ten Lawrence Lane?
Cause they get...
That's, if I, if I listed an address incorrectly in the application...
So I thought, okay, Linda lives at Lawrence Lane in Kennybunk, and now she's gonna add on Lawrence Lane down here? Linda!
You just read it wrong, so...
Am I though?
I'm sorry, the mailing address says ten Lawrence Lane. Location of property says terminus of Thirty-Fifth Street.
Right, she just read it wrong.
Uh, are you sure?
It's you, Brandy.
Yeah, it's you, Brandy, you read it wrong.
I'm sorry. I'll still take the blame issue.
I mean, look, right, ten Lawrence Street, ten Lawrence Street. Did I get like a weird copy?
One of the owner information, that's the contractor.
Yes, I understand that.
Right.
Physical address should've been...
Oh, you're right, that page you're right. Brandy is right.
So I was like, why are we disputing Kennybunk?
She's looking at the building permit itself, that was, that was...
Oh, it was on the building permit.
They're looking at the application for variance right here.
Oh, did you notice the penmanship's different on that? I can blame that on my partner.
I'm just saying.
That's my business partner.
We'll send this bill to Kennybunk.
Jen, were we supposed to get a packet in the mail?
You went to the property neck, who knew?
Packet in the mail.
Didn't get a copy.
Dave, are you gonna have me pack it?
Oh, boy.
I got it.
Lois, you got one of these in the mail before meeting?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I did, I got the opt-out, I had one from you just now.
I just use my P.O. box, and lately the mail's been addressed to my street address.
Yeah, I believe I have your P.O. box, but we can check afterwards.
I'll bring it up with the town administrator.
Thank you.
Good luck. We'll handle it.
All righty. Okay, if there's no more questions from the board...
The only other, just in terms of going through the, checking out the checkmarks along our to-do list, is just making sure that you mentioned the D.E.P., that the D.E.P. received a copy of the variance request, and the opportunity to weigh in.
The D.E.P. or, the D.E.P. will not be involved in this, because we're complying, we're in excess of the D.E.P. setbacks with your town setback. So there's no D.E.P. notification or requirement for any of it.
It just says, cause if it's in shoreland, the D.E.P. must receive a copy of the variance?
Yes, that would be granted, that would be your decision.
What's its...
They would get a copy.
No, before, it says twenty days prior to the action, to us taking action.
Then it was...
I believe that would be referring to if you were exceeding a D.E.P. standard, like a water body setback, which your ordinance doesn't allow.
Shoreland, all right. What's the D.E.P. standard, what's their setback?
Seventy-five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's shorter than what we've, what they've got, that's why...
Thinking that's precautionary thing in your, in your, in the wording of your document.
It's gonna be twenty days.
So my understanding is, that same as his, is that if, that was if it was going to, if it was going to try to give a variance to one of their, one of the D.E.P. standards, but if, if they're seventy-five and we're a hundred, if you decide to make the motion and grant the twenty-three feet, you can always add in at Yoli, not to grant it for a minimum of twenty days, assuming we don't hear from D.E.P., if you wanna cover yourselves to be safe, and we'll send them a copy anyways.
Is that a condition?
We can make that a condition of the motion.
Okay, cause it does say just if it's in the district.
Yep.
Right, and then, I know that we can be stronger with our rules, but we don't have, we can either meet the state standards or be stronger with our rules, but the state has usually...
But state seventy-five, you can't be less than the state.
A reminder to the board, you're waiving a setback, that's a town zoning setback, you're not waiving anything with regard to state law.
No, right.
It's only Acton zoning.
Right, but there's a stipulation in the Acton zoning, then it's getting copied.
And I think that's precautionary, I would assume, even though your ordinance was restructured to not allow lake setback reductions, there are times where you might reduce setbacks to streams, tributary streams and streams going into the lake, other D.E.P., special wetlands that would still have setbacks, and they would need to be notified if you were reducing. But again, this is strictly the road, and strictly something embedded in your town ordinance, not having to do with a natural resource standard of the D.E.P.
But it is shoreland zone.
Yes.
Yes, we are in the shoreland zone, you're correct.
Yes, and that's what it says, in shoreland or Resource Protection District.
It's a good condition, should you decide to grant it.
Yeah, I actually, I actually liked the way she wanted that in there.
Okay. Should we? I would entertain a motion on this matter.
Are we deciding tonight?
We don't have to, but...
Yep, do we?
I'm good to go.
I'm, I'm all set.
Yeah, I am.
You got any more, you got any more concerns?
I just wanna know what you were grandfathered for, like, what were they grandfathered if they wanted to put a building in there sixty years ago, like, what were their perimeters?
It would've been whatever the zoning was at that time.
It wouldn't have, there would've been no property line setbacks likely, and the lake, as Jason was suggesting, I think we, we looked at it together, we had Mike from Chapley, and we were sitting in together, and he come up with the old copy, I think, of the ordinance, that's, I think it was something less than fifty even.
I know, I've seen it as low as thirty-five.
Pretty, pretty, you know...
And the reason for that was to protect, obviously, the shore.
Sure, right, I'm good.
Okay. Yoli?
Uh...
Repeat your motion.
I would entertain a motion if...
Have Yoli.
Do we have to do a finding of facts for this one?
Yes.
And afterwards.
And the findings of...
Oh, we do that first?
You can do the motion first, and then we can...
Yeah.
Cause I don't know which emotion's gonna be, depending on whether you're for or against that your finding of facts would support that.
Well, I'm for allowing them their...
So I'm gonna make a motion for the twenty-three feet?
The twenty-three feet.
But, I would like, whatever the...
The caveat of sending the...
Yes.
The exemption that Yoli put in.
So a motion to approve the twenty-three-foot variance from the center of the road, assuming that D.E.P., we don't hear from D.E.P. within twenty business days per the ordinance, something like that.
Perfect, took the words right out of my mouth.
That's why I wanted, I kinda wanted Yoli to make a motion.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Is everybody clear on the motion?
One of the members needs to say it out loud for the record, in your own terms.
I just say yea, I mean... I'll do it. Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant the variance for tax map two-five-two, Lot double-oh-six, to have the structure, to give it a twenty-three feet, would we word it that the twenty-three feet is the waiver, the twenty-seven?
Twenty-three feet.
Twenty-seven feet back from the center of the road.
It's a twenty-three-foot reduction.
Mm-hmm, it's a twenty-three-foot reduction.
Just trying to figure out which, word it which way, okay. A twenty-three-foot reduction in the setback.
From the center of the road.
From the center line of the right-of-way.
It's getting confusing. Where, to have it be twenty-seven, no less than twenty-seven feet from the center of the road, is that correct?
No, you gotta give them the twenty-three.
I think it's twenty-three, I mean, didn't, isn't the current building envelope you've got, you can be...
I suggested that you were gonna reduce the required fifty-foot setback from the center line of the road, twenty-three feet.
It was reduced by twenty-three feet, so it actually, we always tried to, we always tried to say, we always tried to read it in the, put it to say that it, no less than twenty-seven feet from the center of the road.
And no encroachment on any other setbacks.
Right.
Yep.
You need to say that, Yoli.
Oh, and I would, and did you mention the D.E.P.?
And then, and then we'll get to that next, once we get this down.
Okay, well, it's all part of the same motion.
Yep.
Cause you don't want one without the others, I understand it.
Okay, with the following, okay. All right, to be no less than twenty-seven feet from the center of the road, and no encroachment on any other setbacks. And with the following condition, that it be presented to the D.E.P.
For a minimum of twenty days.
For a minimum of twenty days, to have them respond.
Seconded, I seconded.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
We thank you, very much appreciated, we thank you for your time and your effort, your volunteerism, I was on the planning board in Buxton. I know it's hard to get warm bodies to fill the spots, so I give you a lot of credit.
It's not as much work as the planning board.
Well, I'm not a resident, otherwise I didn't, you know...
It's kinda cold in here, let me stream over the finding of facts.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, she's gotta end that half of the meeting, I'm sorry, she's gotta end that half, Nancy has to end...
Oh, close the public hearing.
Yeah.
We made a motion in a public hearing, so you really don't.
Um, any other business to be brought before the committee this evening? Any other business? Um, so are we short a...
Two now, cause Yoli's, Yoli's gonna move up, Denny's not here, so he'll be your fifth, he'll be your five members.
I was gonna say, wait a minute, until they clear out or something.
So the meeting is still going on, and the camera's still running?
So, Denny will be your fifth person.
Denny was an alternate, is that...
Denny's a regular member.
A regular member, thank you.
So he's here, and then you'd have two alternates. Okay, so the finding of facts, so Mrs. Lawrence is the personal rep for the estate of Galant, tax map two-fifty-two, Lot six, correct?
Yes.
And if I'm gonna type them up, I might as well just go through them. The only setback per the C.E.O. that couldn't be met was the road setback?
The fifteen-foot road setback.
Fifty feet from the center of the road.
All other ones we said were met? So we should probably put the D.E.P. as part of the finding of facts, of the D.E.P. notification?
Mm-hmm. Do we have to go through each of the four?
Yep, the hardship?
Yes.
Yep.
Where are you reading this? Uh, just from the...
Zoning.
Yeah, it's in the zoning too, their application, that, um...
So as you go through those...
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, right here. Yeah.
I'll make those for the next finding of facts, Yoli, the minutes.
Okay, so the first one being that the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted, so unless, without this variance, it cannot be built upon, it would be...
So it's a yes, correct?
And the second one is that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. Uh, yeah, that's...
That's a yes?
Yeah, that the dimensions of the property do not provide for a building window that meets the, like you said, it's fifty feet and one hundred feet would, does not leave any room at all for building.
I mean, the building size will be, be fine, it's just everything else.
Which one, Yola, is that three?